Good evening. And welcome. I just want to give you a few informational items. This meeting is being recorded. It's recorded right now as I speak. You don't want anything said picked up on microphone. So, just giving you a heads up. I need to have you all sign in for contact purposes if you haven't done so. Also, the recent meeting is being recorded is so it can be posted to our website and translated for Spanish for Spanish speakers. So, that will be happening. My name is Steve Harrington. I am the county superintendent of schools for till December 31st. Actually, January 3rd. Tuesday, Wednesday. Anyway, and that completes 51 years. Actually, January, I'll be 52 years of education. And I've enjoyed every minute of it. I come to school and I enjoy working with kids and teachers. And I hope I made a positive difference in our community. I've served 12 years as county superintendent and 39 years superintendent in total of those 51 years. So, I've been around a while. But it's a good job. I enjoyed it and I'm going to have a hard time letting go because Herman knows. But anyway, I want to welcome you because I think being a school board member is the, one of the most essential parts of our democracy. I'm a history teacher, government teacher, and I think being a school board member is the base root of our American democracy. You need to know, if you choose to run for school board, that you individually have no authority. The only time you have authority is when you sit collectively as a school board. And so, you're a parent and a community member, but you are not a board member Monday through Friday until you're at the board meeting. So, keep that in mind. School board members set policy and direction for the school history. They hire and fire the one person that they, that they have direct authority over, the superintendent. They don't have direct authority over teachers because they don't have the authority to license and evaluate teachers. You don't have a license for that. It's called administrative service credential. So, if you're running for the school board because you're unhappy with teacher X, Y, and Z, you need to know that that wouldn't be within your realms of supervision or provision. But you would work with the superintendent who has that authority. So, I hope you're running for the right reasons and for the purposes to make a difference in your community. So, we're going to go through some of the requirements to be a school board member. And then I'm going to turn it over to this illustrious panel. And this illustrious panel represents a spectrum of experience. That's what we put together. Someone in their first term, someone in their multiple terms, and we'll put it at that. They'll go through and share their experiences. We have different types of school boards. We have a county board of education, which is an appellate board. When people are unhappy with the local school board on certain decisions, they can appeal. They don't appeal to the county superintendent. That's not through my jurisdiction. They appeal to the county board. And Herman will tell you a little bit about that to see the county board. So, let's see if I can get this going. My staff is here. You have everything you need. See if I can do this thing. Hey, look how good I am. Okay. First of all, the panel, I'm going to let Herman, why don't you introduce our panel members? And just for the purpose of introductions.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have, first of all, good afternoon. My name is Herman G. Hernandez. I'm the area five trustee for the county board of education. This is my eighth year having the pleasure and honor of serving in our community. And I think we're going to go down the line. And if you can each introduce yourselves and let us know what term you're in and what district you're representing. That would be awesome. And this is for you. We'll see.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rosia Montrao-Abreaz. And I'm in my first term on the Rosin School District.
I'm Joanna Pan. And this is my first term with Pedalen City Schools.
And current president.
Oh, you could, yeah, you guys have.
Need to push the button up on that though.
Yes. My name is Yvonne Crack. I am currently serving on the Alexander Valley School Board. I've been a board member combined Alexander Valley and Healdsburg High School when Healdsburg had just a high school board for a total of about 27 years. So, I've been doing this a while.
All right, and we're going to, we'll do our panel after Dr. Harrington goes over all the exciting forums and things you have to do before you even start.
They'll be exciting. I'll make them as exciting as I can. So, we're going to see. All right. Register our voters is the primary, you'll be dealing with the register our voters of Sonoma County. Kamari Marchbanks is probably the person you're dealing with the most with. You'll get a copy of these slides if you sign in. Look at the slides. Don't worry about that. They'll go out tomorrow. But I just wanted you to know who you'll be dealing with. They're all election specialists. One deals with questions as it relates to campaign financing. One relates, has a specialty in candidate filing. And one is the election supervisor. So, basically, if the other two can't answer, Kamari usually can answer it. He's been around for a while.
Kamari is amazing. He's a massive resource. He's like an open book and he gives you the cellphone and he will respond.
So, he'll help you with your paperwork if you get stuck somewhere in the process. To submit documents to review, you can do it online. And these addresses are given to you. If you have questions on finance, that's given to you there. They give you their phone number directly or you can mail or you can visit. I personally like to walk in and talk to a person. So, I still do that. And so, I go down to Fiscal Drive down there at the Government Center and we go over that. The website is on the website there. And so, those are the things you need. This is a primary contact piece of information you need to have. You need to know that next week, Monday is July the 18th, nomination period now opens for candidates for school board. And the nomination deadline closes August the 12th. If an incumbent chooses not to run, for example, I chose not to run, then they extend the deadline by an additional week. So, you could have a school board. I know of one school board that has all five seats on it. That's unusual, very unusual. And that's because they had multiple resignations during the COVID period. And so, those seats have to be either reaffirmed for two years or reaffirmed for the four-year term. So, it depends which seat. So, when you go in and you're looking at a particular district and you don't know if you can make a full commitment of four years, it may have a two-year seat open. And you might want to pick that seat. And after two years, you can choose to run for that seat again. But it will be for the full four-year term. So, most school board seats are for four-year terms unless you're filling a vacancy. And we'll talk about how that process works within a district. Districts interview, they will appoint. They fail to appoint, I can appoint. But most districts meet their responsibility and they appoint their school board members. In fact, I even appointed Herman, but a school board doesn't have its quorum. A school board has to approve its budget. So, Herman went on up to Keshaya. If you don't know where Keshaya is, it's a drive. It's two and a half hours away from here and it's one of our school districts. And as a county board member, he sat on that board so they can get their budget approved. If they only have a three-person board and you only have two people there, you don't have a quorum. Quorum is the majority of the board needs to be present to make action. So, there are some exceptions, but we really want you to run for school board seats that you feel most comfortable in. And that you may not know this yet, but the vote by mail goes on October 10th and November the 8th is the election day. But what I would tell you also is that when you go in, some of our districts are by trustee areas now. Is West Sonoma County under trustee areas now? Thank you. They start this year. Petaluma is in trustee areas. Sonoma Valley is in trustee areas. San Rosa City is in trustee areas. I don't know, and more of that's going to happen. Mostly your districts of over 2,000 to 3,000 will have trustee areas. So, find out where you live because where you live, if it's not an at-large district, it's a trustee area, you may not live in the right trustee area. So, you need to check that out when you go in for your paperwork. They say trustee area three. You're not sure what trustee area three is, but look at your local district, school district map to find out where trustee area three is. The county board is divided up into five trustee areas. Coincidentally, they correspond to the supervisory districts. So, that's an easy one for them to follow. So, decide before you're going into whether or not you're going to file a statement of qualifications. This is a 200-word statement you will need to file telling people what qualifies you for the school district. And each district charges differently for this. In some districts, they pay for the qualification statement. And in some districts, they say the candidate must pay for the qualification statement. So, you need to ask the question, who pays for this statement? So, if you pay for the statement, then you have another choice. You can have a statement done in English. And then if you choose to have it done in Spanish as well, it costs you additional. But so, just keep that in mind. It does cost to run for the school board. It is not a free job. So, you have to file some filing fees. This is the qualification statement that's separate from the filing fee. So, keep that in mind. If you're running just within your local district, it's not as bad as running countywide. I can tell you that. Because I filed countywide filing fees. So, then you, after you file your state qualifications, that's determined by your local district and how they've set it up. You'll either write a check not to exceed a certain amount. And they'll hold the check. And if, because I've done this, I've written the check, no one's filed against me, I hold the check. You have to do that within 24 hours. They won't hold it this long. But anyway, that happens. So, you need to keep that in mind depending on what the cost is to you. If someone files against, I was with you, then you want to keep that on file. Your statement will get printed and their statement will get printed. So, when you get your ballot book, you both have a qualification statement in there. Everything goes into the registrar voters. Candidates folder is your basic information. So, what you picked up tonight is the candidates folder. And it has the basic information that you need. So, if you look at it, you decide if you're going to go for a full term or a short term. And how would that be determined? Depends if you're filling a seat for someone who's only been appointed. You're maybe only the remaining portion of that term. The district that you're running for, just out of curiosity, I want to start all the way down here. How many are you running in? Okay, so Petaluma-Wa school district. Anybody from Wa? There are 40 school districts in this county. Something. You're running for Wa? Hey, okay. So, we have somebody from South County running for a school board. Anybody North County? Let's see, Cloverdale. Hey, Cloverdale. And we go all the way to, let's go West County, Monterrio. Hey, very, okay. So, each side, I watch. I'll go East County, Sonoma Valley. Beautiful. Okay. All right, so it just gives you an example who's in this community, what districts are up for seats. All 40 school districts are up for seats if you didn't know that. So, you can look at where you live and look at what they're doing. Fill out the candidates folder, which is your basic information. Ballot designation worksheet, the words to describe your primary occupation. Mine, and I listed as county superintendent of schools. I only give the three words. County, superintendent, doesn't count. Schools counts. As I always say, the big words count. Get three big words to describe you. So, think which ones you want. And then we go to a statement of economic interest. And you need to fill out a statement on how much money you think you're going to spend on your campaign. If you're going to spend $500 for flyers and posters, that's good. You need to pick one of the funding categories there. And then, of course, you have to file a statement 700. That's your economic interest. The state of California wants to know your economic interest. How much do you have invested? Most of us don't have anything invested because we just own our homes or our rent or do that. Obviously, you don't have to. But you have to fill out the form. That's a requirement. If you're a current school board member and you're going off the board, you fill out the form. If you're a new school board member, running for election, you fill out the form. And then, once you take your oath of office, guess what? You need to fill out the same form again. It's the state of California, folks. We have you fill out multiple forms. The same form three times. Leaving, coming, and then when you get elected. So, that's the same form. The declaration of candidacy. All the information in there is about the oath. Let's talk about the oath. Because many people oftentimes think that, well, I don't want them, let's say, I'll take a good one. State of California may require vaccinations. They're not going to require it until 2023, but they may require it. You need to know that if you take an oath, and that oath says you should uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California. That means all of its laws and requirements. So, if the state of California makes a law, you don't have the opt-out provision. You are a member of an elective body who has to enforce the rules of the state of California. Now, how that policy is carried out is a reflection of the local district. An example might be, I will use an example that went all the way to court at Sonoma County. We have a little district. And when we have the COVID exposure, the students went out to recess. You might know, well, it's out in your area. So, the students went out to play and Herman came down with COVID. Well, the first thing is, students who had exposure 15 or more minutes had to be restricted for 10 days. That was first set of rules. Well, you know, kids, they play at recess. They talk, they touched everybody and talked to everybody. So, who, that whole grade level went out to recess. So, in Alexander Valley, if your whole grade level went out to recess and they talked to everybody and they all had to stay home for 10 days, what happens the next day in second grade? There is no second grade. They're all, because they all talked to each other and they all socialized. So, the local school board said, well, if we have to follow that rule, what we'll do is we'll make our kids wear masks at recess. That way, they have been a protected environment. And the law says if you have a mask, because you didn't have to wear masks at recess, but you had a mask, then you were protected and you could come to school the next day. Somebody didn't think that was the right rule to follow. So, they sued the school board. It used to it. I've been sued. I don't want to tell you how intense I've been sued because I'm the head of the district or I'm the head of the county. I get sued. I have insurance. newest school board members have insurance. Your district gets insurance. It's a, as long as you follow the rules of your district, you're covered. You go rogue, you may not be covered. But the board had made a decision at an open public board meeting to make masks mandatory at recess. They went to, person tried to get an injunction. Judge said, health and welfare of the children are more important than your personal lawsuit. So, no, I will not impose injunction. And it went to court. When it went to court, the individual lost the lawsuit because the board was looking out for the best interest of all the students and it had a mandate by the state that you were to keep your schools open. And most of those people who were on a board know that that was a requirement. So, that's an example of how a board has to work in, you could have been the no vote. But if the majority went for it, you're part of a board. You're part of a team. So, yes, you weren't the receiver. Ball wasn't thrown to you, it was thrown to her, but you're still part of that team. You have to work collectively together to make the community better and safer. Oftentimes, boards have open discussions. I don't agree with that. That's fine. You need to have some good ground rules and respect for each other when you're on a board. So, look at all these filing forms that you get to fill out. Look at the brochure. Those of you that came in late, if you didn't sign in, please sign in. You'll get all this material sent to you electronically as well. But please, look at it and complete it if you're going to truly run for the board. I think we gave you all the forms. All right, before we go to the panelists, general questions are just about the operational things you have to do. Yes?
Do you know roughly how long this whole process, like as a new person, like when you start to interact with the guy you said was awesome?
Yes.
That's a registrar. It's like, what is it?
You have, you have a whole month and it's open. You could go in on day one. I used to always go in day one. Get my name on the list to make people know I'm running again. Not this year, but I'm running again. So, I would put it out of the board. And I take my paperwork home. And I would take it back and of course, I had to have multiple, I have my petition required. Everybody has a petition required. And it's a percentage of the voters in your district that you need to get signatures. It shows there's enough interest in your candidacy that it's worthwhile. And I think most of them are. Mine, it's not overwhelming in number. It's like 25 to 40, depending on the size. I'm just counting wide, so I had to have a larger number. But if you're running within Petaluma, what's your trustee area? Push that.
I don't know my district number because we just went. And so, when I first ran, it was at-large. I think it was like 20 to 25, like Herman's saying.
But you're asking signatures.
Just so, they have to be registered voters. They have to live in the district.
So, kind of a much smaller district.
Right. If hers was at-large, she doesn't have to get those Petaluma-wide. Now, she's in trustee area three. This is a good question to ask the people in the election. Do those 25 voters have to be in, can they be in the district? Or do those 25 voters have to be in your trustee area? I don't know that answer. It's like, never run. So, you need to ask that question. So, if you need 25 voters and maybe it's a trustee area, your own name need 10. So, and they'll say, so we're in that trustee area. Then you have to get your neighbors, they're talking to you, deciding.
So, it's a, there's a bit of time until you go in and you say, okay, I want to run.
They give you the packet, which I've sort of given you right here. You'll say, well, I have that. Or, and then you can start turning your things in. You don't have to turn them all in at once. I turned mine in peace and we was like, deleted them. So, you don't ask them. The other questions about the process about running for the school board. I think you all got it. Yeah, good. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Herman.
All right, I got it. I'm on my turn. All right, thank you, Dr. Harrington. So, we did have some latecomers. I don't know if you grabbed that packet that Dr. Harrington was referring to, but it's definitely helpful. And you could use that as a guide. And just to specifically answer your question, miss, you have to August 12th to turn in all the information once it's open, it's on July 18th. It's like one full month. So, if you could click forward, I don't know if you've seen the questions yet. And they're pretty basic questions. But what I like to do sometimes when we're doing panel presentations and it's a little more informal and more, it's informative and informal is open it up to you to see if you might have some very specific questions that you're like, I have to ask this right now. That I welcome that question now. And if, if not, well, we're going to, we have a series of questions here that will be the conversation. So, I am going to start.
I want to answer your question because like Herman think you have almost a month. You just turn it in as soon as possible. Because I had to go back twice. Because I, like when the city clerk looked at my information, she's like, I forgot that. And so, I had to go back and she's like, oh, you didn't do this. I had no idea. I mean, that's what you do the first time you run. So, just give yourself time.
We're going to get more into that hopefully when we're answering the questions. But the other thing too, for when you're applying is make sure you have a treasure. It's not your husband, your wife, your kid, or somebody outside of the household.
Somebody who can figure out the forms.
Yeah, because there's the FPPC requirements for, which we'll go into that as well. Basically, you have to report and track every donation that your campaign receives. It's $99 or more. And Kamari and his team at the county go through that with you if you have any questions. But I think we should start at the very, very beginning. We have, like Dr. Harrington said, a pretty good spectrum of school board representation up here. And I'm on the county board, which is way different and constantly gets confused with authority over school districts. We do not have authority over school districts. The main difference between the county board of education, which I don't know, is there anybody in here that's planning on running the 2022 election for county? So, just plain and simple, the difference between a county board is Dr. Harrington is elected and we are also elected. The districts that are represented up here, they are elected, but the superintendent is hired, fired by the district. We also don't oversee all 40 school districts. We oversee a very tiny population of students. Our alternative high schools and our corporate community schools. Dr. Harrington made a quick reference of the appellate body that we, the role that we play in appeals and expulsion appeals and inter-district transfer appeals. So, if a student is denied an inter-district transfer, they have the right to appeal it to their local district. And then, they have, if they deny it, they have the right to appeal it to the county board of education. So, we hear those a lot depending on the year and the season. But what I want to do is start at the very beginning. And I'm going to open it up to any one of you, whoever wants to answer these questions first. But how do you even start a campaign? Like, what would you recommend be the first thing you would recommend to this audience on campaigning? Because that is really essentially the first step before you are able to serve your district. So, I want to answer that question.
I'll answer that question. Talk to your family because it's just not you. It's going to be in the public eye.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, first of all, you have to decide why you want to run, what your values are. And then, and as Dr. Harrington says, talk to your family. And I come from a little tiny, tiny district. And so, we don't have a lot of controversy and, and there's not a lot of difficulty. But you're still, every family member is still kind of visible. So, and then decide how you're going to approach your campaign and how much you need to get out there. I mean, in a little district like mine, I also had the advantage of, I had grown up in the district. So, I knew everybody and everybody knew me. And so, you know, I wasn't campaigning in the more formal sense. When I was running for the Healdsburg High School Board, I did. I literally walked up and down the streets and knocked on doors and said, hi, this is who I am. This is why I'm running. You know, give them a handout so they can remember your name later. And, you know, it's part of the process.
I have a follow-up question for tiny district. If, if you're running uncontested, does, do people typically campaign in that?
No, I would say no.
Yeah, and one of the things that I would recommend for you would be, and I don't know what district you're running for, but if you do start campaigning and promoting yourself, you might stay uncontested. The best elections you want to be in are the ones where you don't have an opponent because you're going to win 100% of the time. That's not winning grants. But I think like right now, you do have the opportunity to start talking to parents, talking to your community, talking to your grocery store.
Or informally.
Exactly. Letting them know you're running. And then you start to gain that momentum. And sometimes people run at the last second because they don't know anybody else is running. And actually, and for our members, that's a, I love the time, like if we, if you, if the small districts want us to be more focused on you, just let us know. I grew up in Garenville, so I know a little bit about. Um, I, I grew up in Garenville, so, um, I know a little bit about small town vibes. But we do have two districts here represented who are a little bit larger. Petaluma being the largest one, um, as well as first-term, uh, school board members. And, um, and President Pong, she's been the president since last year, you're doing a two-year term. Um, she's in her first term as well as being president, which is a very difficult task. So I, that's pretty awesome to know that you're president and your district is the largest up here, so. For, and you do have district elections, which I think some of you are gonna have to run. But what was it like when you ran, uh, in twenty-eighteen for an at-large district to campaign the whole city, I imagine?
Yeah, it was, um, seven of us running for three seats. And I got, probably too late. Um, I want to say I first, the first time I turned my papers in, it was maybe two weeks before the end of the filing period. Um, but I'd say if I had it to go over again, I would have decided earlier. I would have gotten all my people together. One of my best friends is a graphic designer, so she designed my, uh, posters and, uh, then someone else came along later and she was like, you don't know if you're doing something in your campaign. And I was like, thank you. I had no clue what I was doing, as you could tell. I was just like, I'm just gonna run. And I had some, uh, posters and yard signs. But then, uh, this person who decided to help me, um, she helped me print up ten thousand, like, you know, door knockers. And I think we passed out like eight thousand of them. So I had my family, my friends go door to door. Uh, we knocked a lot of doors, we left a lot of flyers, but it's a lot of work.
Do you, do you remember about how much money you had to raise for campaigning?
I blocked so much of it out because it was just really stressful. Um, I think I raised close to five thousand and I spent thirty-five hundred-ish or so. Um, yeah.
Oh, that's great. Um, and I also want to get Rosio involved in the conversation. She's one of our youngest, uh, school board members in Selma County currently. Uh, she was appointed last year in March for the Rosa School District. And reading, uh, a lot of amazing information about her appointment in the Press Democrat. I think it's, it would be great to kind of understand, Rosio, like, what were some of the things that inspired you to run for that appointment or, or apply for that appointment? And how could the community here get better prepared with their messaging, uh, as they run their own campaigns?
Um, well, I'm on a, I'm an alumna of the Rosa School District and I graduated like fifteen. Um, I think, um, honestly, I, I was on the East Coast, um, when COVID hit. And so, um, I, I, COVID kind of brought me back to my community. And, um, at the time, um, just with, uh, just along with a lot of other schools, I think across the country, I think there's been a lot of, um, different conversations going a, a, around about equity and, and anti-racism and how that plays out in school districts. So, um, when the vacancy opened, that's where my, um, desire to be a part of the, the school board came from. Um, I think that one of the things I've definitely learned from being a school board member is that there's a lot of value in personal experience that you might bring as, um, alum or as parent or, or whatever you might be in relation to the school district. But there's also the need to not solely center your, your mission on that and then use that as, like, not in spite of that and the reason why you decided to run or, or interview, but, um, also become more current and up to date with where things are at, at now. Um, and I think that's where the, the conversation, the conversation with, um, me members really comes into play.
What was, what was the? What was the first thing you did once you were appointed? Because there's the whole campaign part, but then there's like the, the huge steep learning curve.
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing is the Brown Act. Um, so you might have already heard of it if you're trying to run. Um, I think, um, for myself, what really helped me was doing CSBA's Masters in Governance Course once I was in as a board member and I, and I did all five of those courses and that really helped me. Um, I think filling a lot of my gaps, especially compared to the more seasoned board members on, on my board.
How about you, uh, and Joanne or Yvonne, when you first joined the board? Like, what were things that you went straight to? You're like, oh no, I got elected. What do I have to do now?
Well, I think for me, the most, um, I, I didn't do the CSBA, um, classes until later. Um, and I haven't done it the whole five, I haven't done the whole program. So, I mean, I think that's a great idea. Um, but for me, the most difficult thing was learning to read a school budget. Uh, we are, you know, we have a business and I thought I knew how to read a budget. Let me tell you, it's all old and ballgame. So for me, that was the steepest learning curve.
Yeah, definitely the budget. And all the acronyms. I mean, I worked in schools in there. I mean, I thought I knew all the acronyms and I did not. Um, yeah, just getting used to how the meetings are run, uh, when to vote, when to speak, when to allow the public to speak, just all of those things. Um, was, yeah, it was just the important curve. I felt like I spent the first couple meetings just like sitting back and watching, unsure of what to say and when to say it.
Would you encourage any of the people in the room to be a, I'm assuming most of you are already attending, uh, the board meetings that you're anticipating running for. But that's another really excellent way of kind of getting to see the board packet online now. Um, but also listening to how the board interacts with each other and the community members. Um, one of the things going back to campaigning, uh, we talked a little bit about what some of our members did in their early stages to prepare for a campaign. But, um, raising money, I, I think, how, how comfortable were you when you campaigned in the past, um, any one of our members here? With asking people for money and how did you come up with who you were gonna ask? Seems to always be a key variable in campaigning.
Again, I have a lot of helpful people. A friend of mine set up a website and she set up a donation, um, link. So, um, people just started donating and there were a couple house parties, people donated. And again, thank goodness I have friends who are very political and active in campaigns all around the county. So they're like, okay, make sure when someone fills out a check, also have them fill out this form with their, um, occupation and their name and their address and all those things. I had no idea. Um, but it was, it's not easy asking for money. I mean, if you get people behind you, I think people know that, um, you're open to donations, that it can be a double-edged sword. Cause it could be like two years down the line, I donated to your campaign. Like, I can't believe you're not gonna do what I want. Or I went door to door for you, or I did, I voted for you. I can't believe, um, you're not doing this thing that I want, so, yeah.
How's it get a question then?
Yes?
Um, how big were endorsements from larger organizations for all of you in your campaign? So like political party endorsements, anything like that, that you guys all kind of helped, they donated to campaigns. Was that part of like your, your reasoning as well?
Yeah, so, uh, I, I kind of want to pitch you on this because, so I've worked multiple campaigns and I've ran for my position three times. And I highly encourage you, even if you're running that close, to try and go through that entire process because even if you run out of oaths, miss, you building a relationship with some of these larger organizations. Um, there's a lot of different political action committees from local chambers to labor, environmental unions, democratic, republican. All of those exist. They all have endorsement processes. Um, so I, but I highly encourage you, all of you, to look at where your values stand and who you would want to support you and reach out to them because they all have endorsement processes. Some organizations may not have school board process, but they'll create one for you. Will they come up with questions? I've seen that happen in class. And that also helps you with your, uh, what I would call, uh, one of the recommendations I would make to my own question of raising money is creating a money tree, starting very conservatively with what's your grandma gonna give you? What's your grandma, parents, uh, your neighbors, your brother, your sister? Um, and then creating a long tree of a hundred dollars to see how much money that will help you raise. But then you incorporate the organizations who do endorsements and some of those endorsements come with some extra funds. Thank you for that question. Yes, ma'am.
Were, were any of you involved in?
Hi, were any of you involved in candidate forums? Um, it may not apply to the smaller districts, especially in uncontested elections. But are there any candidate forums that might come about before the election? That would have, like you mentioned, there were seven candidates for the seats. Do you, any advice about candidate forums?
I'd definitely go to them. I mean, the first one, cause I, I am, um, I'm actually very introverted. And so I was terrified before the first forum. But then in the end, it turned out to be one of my favorite things was, um, going out, talking about issues, talking about why I wanted to run. And so then when I was going door to door and dragging all of my kids, I had four kids, and they hated the election because they'd drive me out, walking up and down Els Petaluma. But we'd be knocking on the doors and people would be like, oh, I already voted for you. And so I always asked them, why? Well, why did you vote for me? And they're like, oh, I saw you at the forum. So either they attended in person or they, uh, watched it online, so.
Any other, any other questions?
Any of you have a website? You set up a website?
I, I did when I ran the first time. Very helpful. The other thing too, because you are coming up with the deadline in August, is I would highly encourage you to really get, if you're running a contested race, even beforehand, I've seen school board members do what they call a campaign kickoff, which will sometimes make other members who might be thinking, they're like, oh, she's very well supported or I liked her message, I don't want to run anymore. Um, but the point of a campaign kickoff is to really build that momentum, announce your running, make that big splash. Social media really, really makes it. But you, the only reason you would need a, a, a website, in my opinion, for now is just to get donations in through the internet because social media won't allow you to take donations without a website. But with Facebook alone, um, it's an easy way to create your own website without having to create a website. And you promote yourself and create your events for your, for your, um, your campaign kickoff. And then like Joanne said, uh, when you're needing volunteers, you create volunteer walks, you create phone banking and it's all on social media. It's a very useful tool for campaigning and getting your name out there. And the other thing is campaigns can get expensive, especially if you're in a contested race, uh, where you will want to try to send mailers out to voters. That's very expensive, but the best bang for your buck is honestly social media. Especially because of the pandemic right now, one of the silver linings is everyone is glued to their social media and they do get these ads that pop up. And you can make those targeted towards, to just your district or to an entire area, um, that you're running for. Any, uh, challenges that you experienced along your campaigns or being a school board member? That would be something we would want to share with our candidates.
I follow up about the endorsements.
Absolutely.
So sometimes the endorsements do, do come with money. Like if a group endorses you, they'll also offer you money, but a lot of them are just, hey, you're endorsed for free. And, but that also does have a really big, um, impact. Like if there's a group like, oh, uh, this group endorsed Joanna, most didn't, not most, all of them do have, um, I said, interview questions or maybe a video that you'll have to submit. But say again, like Herman was saying, if they're aligned with your values, definitely go for those endorsements, yeah.
Challenges. What have been some of the biggest challenges either campaigning or serving as a school board member? Not everyone speaks at once.
I know, I mean, as far as serving as a board member, um, I can't say, but as far as issues that I've run into as a board member, um, for me, it's mainly financial issues for the district and how we're gonna solve this monetary problem or that monetary problem. Um, but, um, I think if you, you know, if you listen to what the other board members have to say and, you know, try to use logic and common sense. And I've always strongly believed that you're there as a board member. You are really there for one purpose and only one purpose. And that is to provide the best education you can for your, the children in your district. You know, to me, as a school board member shouldn't, it should not be a scuffing scum for a political reason. You should be there for the kids. Um, and, you know, I mean, you don't agree with the rest of the board all the time. Um, but I think when you work together and you all kind of have the same goal, you know, it's, it's a positive experience.
I have a question about, um, how much do you lead, especially for the first timers? Like, how much do you need on other board members to guide you? And what are the rules around conversations with board members that aren't public, you know? Um, and how often is that kind of interaction happening?
Um, I don't know if I would say that I necessarily have lead on, on other board members. I, I definitely have, at the very beginning, especially the superintendent, uh, lead on them to guide you through those roles. And that being that, um, outside of the board meeting, you, you, um, can't start a serial meeting and that happens if more than two people discuss the same topic, even if you play the like telephone game with one, like, one person tells the other, tells the other that itself is a serial meeting, so. Um, so definitely being very cautious around those. Um, I think that one of the challenges coming in as a new board member has definitely been at first knowing the parameters. And, um, because you want to be able to use your voice and you want to be able to do the advocacy that you came in to do. Um, but that advocacy has parameters. Um, so that was definitely something that took some getting issue. And with adding to the, what are the challenges, some of the challenges, um, in, in serving as a school board member, um, for, for the Rosa School District specifically, spent a time of a lot of transition with our superintendent. We had an interim with a new superintendent, so, um, it's definitely been something where, um, being a board and hearing different perspectives and concerns, but then you're the person that's directly working with the superintendent. So the balance between what you're seeing and what you know versus what you're hearing where the public might not necessarily know that, navigating that fine line there. And I think that then they, when people come to board meetings, they tend to come because they want to be heard and they want to be validated. That doesn't necessarily mean that you might agree or that, or that they're, they're, they know the full, um, story. But for me, what I've seen is that, um, as a board, the, the importance of providing that validation because the people are coming to you, um, see.
Question, Beth.
What, what's the time commitment, um, of being on a school board in general? I mean, obviously there's scheduled meetings, but beyond that, I mean, are there other things that we need to be aware of? Um, it just making, you know? things that we need to be aware of and just making, you know, making ourselves aware of that? I mean, I, I have two jobs and two kids and, you know, stuff, so I'm just trying to think about.
District that you're running for?
WA.
I think WA is about the same size as Alexander Valley, I mean, that'd be a more, a more accurate time commitment.
So, I think first of all, at least in our district, each board member is, is required to sit on one or two committees. So curriculum committee, a safety committee, that sort of thing. So that would be depending on the committee, you know, probably, you know, maybe one meeting a month, maybe four a year, depending on the type of that particular committee. Over and above that, our board packets probably run somewhere between fifty and three hundred pages and you're expected to read those and know pretty much what's in there. So that's your largest commitment and those are usually, at least in our district, we ask that they get sent out the Thursday before our Monday night board meeting, so you have one weekend to, to read them, you have like one weekday or two weekdays and then a weekend, because that does take quite a bit of time. But that's your, and, and then of course your, your board meeting. So, you know, it's not a huge commitment, but, but it's there. You know, I mean, it's several hours a month.
Yeah, and then also sometimes, depending on your district, if you have an active parent group or an active foundation or somebody that wants to come and check out the amazing work that they're doing or their events, their sport and their games, so, so that's an added response. It's not like you have to do that, but it just really, that's a great experience for any board member, because it gives you the opportunity to talk to other parents, especially if you're not familiar with the basketball team. You get to meet a whole new group of people. And, and then that's really valuable information to bring back to your board meetings, different perspectives, I would say too. The, we do also have to serve on two different committees now that you mentioned that. And also there's something that I, so one of the other questions, not every district has a budget line item for professional development for their board members. But if your district does do that, I would highly encourage, and even if they don't and you have extra money, I would highly encourage you to attend California, you've heard CSBA, California School Board Association Conference, the California Latino School Board Association Conference, the unity conference they do every October, August. Then there's, like, we have the County CCPD, which is the California County Board of Education Conference, which is mostly for the elected county board members, then you have the National School Board. Any conferences that you can go to, it's amazing because you are listening to what people are doing up and down the state or the whole nation. You bring back these ideas and you share with your team, your superintendent, and it's a great way to bring back valuable resources and ideas to your district.
I was just sharing that, like, the Latino one and there's also an AAPI community and I think there's a black community one that have workshops and there's not just conferences, but they have specific workshops about how to serve a specific student population in the new school system.
And there's also local coalitions or organizations that are focused on education that may not be rooted in your district, but it's like a county-wide opportunity and those are just all experiences for learning. Any other questions?
I would tell, I would tell you some of the things, when you talk about challenges, I think personnel decisions are the hardest ones to do for school boards, because you need to know that about ninety four percent of the budget is personnel-driven. Very little is cut other outside, school business is a person, it's a people business. And so when you can't get your budget to balance, it means by March fifteenth, you have to give preliminary notices. And that's the first, that's just, we can't see where we're gonna make these cuts. She was talking about her twenty-seven years, you've been down this road before. And that you have a pressure group, so, well, Mr. So-and-so because he's lowest on the list or all these things. But your job is to keep the budget of the district solvent. So it's not personal. It's, that's the hardest decision I have always had to face as a superintendent. When I did layoffs, I met with every individual I ever had to lay off, because I think they need to know it's not, it's not about you. You're a good teacher, you're a good person, it's a matter of positioning costs. And if I could bring you back at will, this is how we're gonna do it. It's that, that's the personal part of being a superintendent that I think is most difficult when I've ever had is having to do cuts. And I was a superintendent of a small rural district and that really hurts, because it's all family. So I look at Alexander Valley, that's all family out there. They've been there for years and you have to do a cut. So I would say personnel decisions are the hardest and you can't share personnel information, it's private, so I think that's something to keep in mind. I was gonna say, Petta's never only have two school board, two school meetings a month. And Windsor had two.
You have two a month and then, um, July, November, December will be one.
Yeah, so look at, every school board has a nine thousand series, policy series. You have to adopt your policies, but look at the nine thousand, that's board bylaws. And it sort of outlines what your district bylaws are. So you might want to look at those to see what your district, how it's set up. You have committees, they have committees. Each district sort of, each board is set up the operational practices of the district. So look at your district's policies as it relates to operation.
One other question, have you found that you've been able to have the impact that you hoped, that you would have when you decided to join a school board or do you find that, you know, it's a lot more nuts and bolts and kind of just getting the things done?
This is a great question.
It just depends on the day. Some days I'm like, yeah, that's over. Great, like we got that through, and other days I'm like, why is it taking so long? It just, things in schools take a long time and something that Yvonne was talking about, you might go in, join a board with like some really great ideas, but then you may have to bring other people along. And as someone else was saying, you can't like do that behind closed doors, everything has to be open and out in public. So that's like finding the right time during a meeting to talk about what you would like to do and move forward. But to answer your question, yes and no, like there's some great things happening, I think in Petaluma, but there is more that I feel like I would like to see, so. But, you know, after three and a half years, we're taking steps, so.
Another excellent resource too that I forgot to mention earlier is if, if you are elected, there are new school board member workshops and go post a couple of them for all the new elected candidates or school board members, but also the veteran ones who are reelected and just want to brush up on some of that exciting Brown Act information in your head code. But, and there are Brown Act books if you really are serious, want to read it beforehand, but honestly, most districts do have legal counsel and superintendents are pretty familiar with the Brown Act and like Rocio said, I definitely leaned on Dr. Harrington when I first started with the school board and they pretty much equipped you with all that information. And he has grown a little shorter since we, by that. But anyways, are there any other questions from our guests, but also from the panel? Is there any words of wisdom you would want to share with the community here who is interested in running?
Touching on something that Dr. Harrington mentioned, about budgets and then about personnel. And so we're starting to see those two things more closely colliding and being more contentious because even though we have a great budget from the governor, you know, six percent COLA and more money investment schools, with inflation like eight, nine percent, like there were things that we wanted to do. Like building materials were too expensive, so we had to table things. Really hard to hire people and our whole school board went to a national lobbying session and just asking like, from like the federal government, like give us more time, spend this money, because we want to hire people because money gave us, we don't have time to spend it because we can't find people, it's just like this whole hamster wheel feels like. And so those will probably be your biggest challenges if you join the board and making personnel decision unfortunately that's a, like cuts and trying to pay a little more wages while living in this economy.
I'm gonna give you a question, do you know how your district's finance? Is it, is it state financed or is it property tax financed? And each board member should know that, that's one of the most basic questions you need to know. So if you're a state financed public school system, which is LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, you hear them talk about that, that means that you have to live from the state. The state pays you a per amount per student, that's the state minimum average. Now, if you are a community funded school district, such as Alexander Valley, they live off their property tax, that means their student population and their property tax exceeds the amount that the state gives, so that extra dollar they get to put into their school system. Half of our community schools are basically funded school district, I almost used the old word, basic aid, but community funded school districts. So you need to know where yours is. You're gonna run for the school board, that's where does the money come from? That's one of the first questions you should ask. Ask the superintendent, he or she should know.
So when did the, which, I've only heard basic aid and when did that change?
Two thousand thirteen, we're just slowly changing, I would add. Yes. Give for your student. It runs, remember it all, all those back to Prop thirteen, what your basic property tax was when they converted over to Prop thirteen. So if you had district had a low base, it's built from there. So on the average, if you are a basic aid school district, from the state of California, it's about fourteen thousand, it's probably gonna be closer to sixteen thousand dollars per child with federal dollars coming in, okay? So it depends how much federal money you get. For example, some districts, because they have economic impact in their community, meaning they have high lunch counts, they have economic interests, they're not making the income level as severe there. They'll get more federal dollars in a district such as Alexander Valley. It will get very few, I don't even think you get any title, title.
It is few.
Yeah.
Tiny amount.
Because the community makes more than the, the average. So you have to learn that, you have to learn what type of community is funded, because that's gonna determine where you move your money and where you put your priorities. Remember the school board handles the money as the superintendent will make a proposal, but you have the authority to change that. It's a little different than our situation. They approve the budget, but county superintendents, the elected authority can design the budget. And so it's really good that we're on talking terms.
And we have the same here. Another thing too is you all, all your districts do have the Local Control Accountability Plan, which coincides with your budget and that's a very, I mean, it's very long, it's about a hundred, ours is a hundred and thirty pages. But every district has one and that might help you with, you're about like kind of creating your campaign message, understanding what the school is focusing on in terms of equity. Because equity is not equal, it means that the students who need the most resources are are getting more resources than the students who are getting proper resources. And that's very important to understand. And as we all know in this room, since we're looking at the student populations in Stone County, it has been heavily shifted towards our Latinx Latino Hispanic community. And a very important population that I would encourage all of you, but I'm just recommending, I'm not saying you have to do this, but you, you need to include your Latino and Spanish speaking family members in part of your campaign, because they're your students and their families are living in your community. And I think that's a very, it's more and more engaged, they're getting more and more engaged, but it's something that we commonly forget about because they're not showing up the way that other parents who are coming from affluent communities or speak fluent English show up to the school board meetings. You're gonna see very little amounts of parents or Latino or Spanish speaking at public comment and there's issues and challenges in that district. I highly encourage you to find out why that is and what's the engagement plan of your school district. And I know that's not where we're trying today with, with this forum, but it is, they are Latino community is over fifty percent of the KT twelve population and that's just going to continue to increase.
I would tell you three things to wrap up tonight that you need to get from your district. Budget, the local control, funding, the plan, the LCAP plan, Local Accountability Plan, and the nine thousand series on, on the district and how it practices its business. If you do those three things and pull those documents, let the school board, let the administrative assistant know that you're planning to run for the school board and you'd like a copy of those items, those are all public information items. Most nine thousand policies are online, they'll probably tell you that, so you can scan it and just look through them. It tells you the officers of the meeting and so on some. As Herman said, the Local Control Accountability Plan is where the district has made what its priorities. They have to do that for the state to show them where they're spending the money. So any last minute questions? Trying to honor time here. First of all, I want to thank our panelists, do a nice job.
Hi Jen, it's going back to actually what you said about the community that you serve and I know you guys all started as community members and how do you keep a be on what's going on within your school community and want to become a school board member? Does it change, does it, does it, you just keep going about business?
In my personal experience, I, when I first joined the Alexander Valley Board, I was a parent and when I got on the board, nobody talked to me. It was a very interesting experience because, I mean, everybody had been voicing complaints and talking about, you know, this teacher and that program and whatnot and you get on the board and it was crickets, you know? So you, I mean, you do, you have to reach out to people, but you have to be kind of careful how you do it too, you know? Because you have to be careful not to be saying things you shouldn't say and, and all that. So, but yes, there, there is a definite change, or at least in my situation, it definitely was.
Well, and I guess this is, it kind of goes back to the question that I had asked about overall advice. I think that while it's intimidating at first to be such a new board member, I think that for those of you who are running for the first time, something that's very valuable is that you're bringing in a very fresh perspective and once you've been on the board for quite some time, it's easier to not look, to not ask those questions or just assume that this is the way things should be done. And so for me, I think that asking those questions and, and one of the biggest questions that I have found useful in asking on myself, but also fellow board members is whose voice is missing here? I think that the, the best way to go about involving community is not just doing it one-on-one, but how can the whole board listen to a voice that might be missing? Because then it's public. And then you can talk about those things and you can, sometimes there's an elephant in the room and it needs to be pointed out in order to move forward as a whole. And it's uncomfortable, but being the, the, the fresh perspective that you can see things and not, don't ever assume that something has already been talked about or has something has already been asked. Do it and maybe that's how you'll know if it has or hasn't been considered.
I just think, I think you
I just think, um, if you choose to run for school board and are elected, you get a really thick skin really quickly. Um, can't be local boundaries. With people, like, I have people, um, like, Facebook message me or text me and like, hey, can you send this to my. Publicity school email address, like, everything has to go there. Um, and then, I mean, there's memes, I wanna repost on Facebook, but I can't. Um, or, you know, like, I can't comment on things like I would have before, so you just have to just learn how to scroll as well, you know. It will change your interactions, but not necessarily for the the worst.
I had a quick question about interaction, um, is there anything that's like taboo for board members to do, like sitting in on a P T O meeting, is that? Not something that should be done by a board member to kind of be engaged with the community and see what they're looking at and what they're going over?
Could you repeat the question?
Question was. The question was, what what's appropriate to be engaged with? I heard the question, like, can you attend a P T A meeting, is it always as a P T A member? And you may comment on the P T A budget or things like that, just have to be careful when you may comment on the P T A budget. That, um, you're not speaking as a board member. You have to always, I would always make myself people, you know, because my children went to every one of my districts I was superintendent. I always, my, your wife said, uh, well, yes, my wife has her opinions and other, you know, perspectives, but you have to balance that. Because you are a board member when you sit as a board, you don't give up your parental rights. You still get to participate, you should participate in your child's school. So I would just, it's a matter of, like she said, it's a, it's a matter of balance. And when someone wants to talk to you about, you know, Herman, the teacher that your son has, you know, I really don't, that's not appropriate. That's what I might, my wife would always say that, it's not appropriate, that's for me to talk about those things. So you have to learn the polite answers and wet answers, you know, because you have to respect people and the confidentiality of those, some of the part of your job as personnel. So it's a, it's a, she said, right, it's a typo, hit the one with make up.
Yes, George. If you're a coach at a middle school or a high school. And you get elected to um the school board, do you have to give up your?
You should, you should, because you're getting paid.
What if you don't accept the pay?
This may be different, if it's a paid position and you're filling it, you have conflict of interest.
What if it's a volunteer position?
That's a little different, you can still be your volunteer if you're welcome, just helping out with the ball coach, that's different. But you have to be careful, once again, what you say. You voted for the football budget, but you didn't vote for an increase in the finance budget?
Can you abstain from, like, the football budget now?
Yeah, it's a personal trick, remember, abstention is where you have a personal, like, a financial gain or interest. So I tell board members, you really can't abstain very much, because what's the personal gain of interest to you? That's what an abstention is. So, but if he's if he's finally approving something, if his son's the quarterback and it's gonna be better, I would abstain. And you have to watch about nepotism and all that. Look at your board bylaws, all that's defined in the board bylaw. Questions? I wanna thank you all for coming, I wish you the best of luck, should you choose to run. It's gonna be odd not to run again, but it's also a sort of relief. So I wish you the best of luck, thank you. Thank you, Tim.